I would like to call to order the November 4th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First item on our agenda is approval of the work session agenda, which you all have a copy before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with the changes on page two?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And first up in our discussion items is an update on the project for synthetic turf playing fields, and the county manager will talk to us. Jonathan's going to be the deputy county manager. He'll talk to us about that.
Actually, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about scope and give you an update on where we stand with the project. Rodney's gonna talk to you about money, the important part. We have met with the primary vendor we had identified, which is the same vendor that's installing the fields now at West Cabarrus High School. So if you'll recall, the scope included installing a stadium field at Cox Mill and J.M. Robinson also, but then we've been looking at two additional practice fields that could be installed, synthetic turfs, practice fields that could be installed at West Cabarrus High School. That appears that we will be able to do that. We've gone beyond that even in the scope and starting to look at some products that allow the fields to be much cooler, which with tournaments identified for summer, that's extremely important with these fields. And then we've also begun to discuss some of the priorities that the Convention and Visitors Bureau has, and John Mills is here if you had any questions for him, but they feel like that some lighting on those practice fields, and then we've looked at restrooms to serve them. Beyond that, we've also started looking at the tracks at those three schools, and you've probably heard some of that from the school district in the past about certified tracks, and the one at West Cabarrus is intended to be a certified track. So we were looking at different track surfacing. So we're meeting almost on a weekly basis at this point, and we will be meeting again this week to refine the scope, look at all those costs. We've asked the vendor to come back with some additional cost information and then match that to our budget, work out those agreements, and bring them back to you.
So on the financial side, we currently have 1.7 million, a little bit over that, available in that fund. And then we had talked about a payback over about a five-year period. We would bring in an additional 1.2 million over five years, and so you're looking at a total budget of roughly $2.9 million that could go towards this.
So the 1.7 million is what's currently sitting in that fund?
Correct.
And the 1.2 would be what would be advancing to be paid back from that, those proceeds?
Yes, and we think if we wanted to, that we could put that into our debt issuance for February. So we're gonna go out for debt in February for the courthouse, the middle school. We think we could tack this on if you wanted to do that.
So what we'll be getting back to you is with that total budget and what we're recommending, both as a scope for the project and a budget for the project, and I think based on what we're looking at and what we feel like we should put in place, we will probably be recommending that short-term financing to you so that we can do the majority of the project upfront. It does allow us, you know, as I said, there's a number of other items out there, so we may need to schedule some of those in the future, and then we could look at continuing this project beyond the five years, but that would be a later discussion.
Does, do these figures include any addressing of the track issues that you talked about?
At this point, they don't. There are some options for that, so the track is not, has not been surfaced yet, so there are some upgrades that could be done now. And so part of the question is if those upgrades are done, it allows for an additional certification, and we may come back and recommend some of that to you based on that certification. We're still trying to get some more information on that, though.
Yeah, and I was curious, I thought there was some issue with the other high schools about the track and how it was impacted by putting the artificial turf in, other than the new one.
I think with each of these, and they've looked at them, so the vendor's actually been out and looked at each of the facilities, so even with the synthetic turf itself, it's like a carpet almost, and that it has a concrete strip around the edges as a tack strip of sorts. And that can affect the tracks, but they do not think that will affect the tracks on any of these fields. So I think we'll still have the option to install the synthetic turf and then come back later and upgrade those tracks, should that be a choice we make.
So what's the, I guess, I wanna make sure I'm following you. The captain obvious question is the certified track is the rubberized true competitive track that is not what we typically do on a high school.
That's right, but there are a number of levels of that, to the degree that you can rubberize the track, or how many layers it is, and how well it holds up, coloring, and actually, I think there were seven different options.
So what is the current spec for the track that's gonna go down before we decide what we're going to do?
It is spec'd for a rubberized track.
Okay, 'cause that's different than what we, I say we, the school system has done previously, which is, which is good. It never made sense to put just, which, an asphalt track that you can't really use to have a meet. They could practice, but they couldn't host a meet, so.
And there are advantages, injury and wear and tear, but the main one is looking at that North Carolina High School Athletic Association certification, the eight lanes, the surface, the things necessary to hold conference and regional and state meets.
And also potentially host AAU track meets in the future if we want to do that.
So that's what we're looking at, is what level do you go to next to start hosting non-high school events, or for those AAU, for the track clubs, because track is a very large sport internationally, and so there are a lot of travel meets.
The, just for the board's purpose, the bathroom and the lighting for those multipurpose fields is not included in that 1.2 as well, right?
It is, it could be, and so that's part of what we're looking at, is how much of that can we budget in the initial, 'cause there's the, there's, of course, the primary is to do the synthetic turf fields, including the practice fields. Then the second, I think the next priority is to use that coating that allows them to be cooled and cooled more effectively with water.
Right.
And then third would be to start looking at what other facilities are necessary to support these.
Any other questions for?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Jonathan, you may have said this, I don't recall, you know, I was doing something else, trying to get signed in mostly, but on the 2.9 million, is that for all four fields? The two that we plan on doing eventually, you know, you got 1.7, and we're gonna put 1.2 with it, 2.9, would that do four?
So I can take that one. So the best way to look at that 2.9 is that's the capacity we have available, assuming that you're comfortable with that short-term debt issuance?
The 1.2 is a debt service.
For the 1.2 million.
Okay.
So that 2.9 million is the capacity we have, and then we still have to determine what we can fund with that.
Okay, I see. All right, and the second question would be, over the course of how many years did it take us to get that 1.7 from the CBB? So that would be what, some type of annual contribution or quarterly or whatever, just to sort of get an idea. You're talking short-term financing. Would we be getting enough to pay the debt service on the 1.2 without having to put more money back in from the general fund?
It's about a little under $250,000 per year that goes into that fund, and so we'd be looking at about five or six years to repay that.
So that would be enough to cover the debt service on the 1.2?
It would, yes.
Okay, so I need, thank you.
Ping you back on Commissioner Shu. What's the total cost of the four fields? Do we know what that is?
So the two additional fields, Cox Mill, J. and Robinson, the stadium fields are roughly one and a half million, but then there's also the coating, the additional coating that you would need to put on the Central Cabarrus and West Cabarrus High School. So those fields need some additional treatment to bring them to the same level. I can, if you'd like, I can give you more detail, that we have some proposals I can forward to you that will provide that detail.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on the total scope of the work. For some reason, I thought it was more new, but we're talking about Central.
It is, and then.
But part of the budget is just doing some maintenance and upkeep at Central.
Maintenance upkeep at Central, and even West Cabarrus does not have that additional, John, I never get the name right, it is a coating that cools, helps cool it, by what it does, it holds water better, so when you use the irrigation cannons, it holds the water, it evaporates more slowly to provide longer cooling on that.
Some of those fields in the summertime, spring and summertime, you can't get on them because they're so hot. Yeah, so this is a cooling system. So Central doesn't have it, but West Cabarrus is, while it's a brand-new field, they didn't put that application on there, or will not be. So we're gonna add that to that, to make those two fields functionable as well in the summer and spring. And then same thing with Cox Mill, and then the two multipurpose fields, those would be phase two, with the additional money.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll move to item 3.2 from Innovation and Technology Report from Debbie Brennan.
Well, welcome to the innovation report. First of all, let me introduce our book club for the month that's On the Edge by Allison Levine. I had the privilege of hearing Allison speak at a conference last month, and she's very entertaining, so if you have an opportunity to download this on Hoopla and listen to it, it's quite entertaining. She led the first All-American Women's, excuse me, expedition to Mount Everest, and she has a local connection here in North Carolina. She graduated from Duke Business School, and she's carried the Duke banner to the highest peak on seven continents, so she's, it's quite an interesting book, so I encourage everybody to join us this month with our employee digital book club, using your Hoopla account through the Cabarrus County Library. Our innovation report this month is going to talk about continuous improvement. I don't, you may remember back in June, we presented a dashboard showing our plan review process. Today, we're gonna talk about Digital Plan Room that went live today, and it's a part of our continuous improvement for our plan review. As everybody knows, there's a lot of construction and development going on in Cabarrus County, so we focused a lot on making those processes easier. And today I have Seth Axum with me, he's from E-Permit Hub. He's been here to make sure that our go-live went smoothly today, and Todd Kulp, our chief building inspector.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Seth, I'm with a company called E-Permit Hub, and we offer a product called the Digital Plan Room, which is what the Cabarrus County here has implemented to help streamline and add efficiencies to their plan review process. I think the easiest way to describe what we embarked on with this project is we took a process that is largely, if I wanna draw a parallel to it, if you've ever worked on a Word document and needed to collaborate with other folks on it, and you send it off to somebody, and they save it off with their initials at the end, and then they save it off to somebody else with their initials at the end, and eventually, somebody has to put it all back together into whatever that final document looks like. That is kind of what the plan review process was working like here. A customer would submit their plans, reviewers on this end would check it out, mark it up, maybe a different discipline would check it out, mark it up. They would all go through that process and then send that back to the customer in a very linear fashion. And what we've embarked on to improve upon that process is make the entire plan review a digital and collaborative and interactive process. So think about going about what I just described in terms of everybody saving as a document to put together the final document, to one that's much more like a Google Docs or Office 365, where everybody works off the same copy, and everybody sees the latest and greatest on a single source of truth, working together. So up on the screen, you can see some of the high-level features that we're enabling by embarking on this project, but at the end of the day, what we're doing is we are giving our customers faster feedback on their submission, as well as a much more interactive process to interact with the county and the cities here to resolve any issues, any code issues that they need to resolve during the plan review process, and ultimately getting them to an approved state in a much more efficient and timely manner.
This is the little video that you have.
Oh, okay, so part of this process was we created a number of training videos for the public to be able to work with, but what you're seeing here is a list of issues, and it's moving very quickly, but a list of issues that need to be resolved. Now, in today's, let me just take pause real quick. Prior to implementing this particular product, what the customer would do is log on to the citizen portal, they would download a PDF that has been what they call redlined with comments and issues right within the document. Customer downloads that, opens it up on their PC, makes the changes, creates a new PDF, and uploads it. What we have here in this video, if I come back a little bit, to here, is now they'll be interacting with the citizen portal, and they're able to see a list of their issues here, and then when they click on the issues, what happens is it opens up that particular issue right within the context of their, I guess I didn't hit pause, right within the context of their plans, allowing them to effectively see exactly what the plan reviewer marked up. So everybody's looking, working off of the same exact document interactively, and we call that collaborative issue resolution. Ultimately, they'll, the customer will go through, they'll take a look at the markups, take a look at the issue as documented, they'll provide a resolution narrative of how they address that issue right within the context of the item that they are correcting, and then once they have completed that, they will have to go through and mark each one of these effectively, and once they've all been marked as answered, then they'll be prompted to be able to go back in and submit any corrections as a part of that process.
Thank you, Seth. Todd, do you have any points?
We're excited about it. What we're excited is it brings the city, reviewers.
Fire, planning and zoning, engineering, it brings us all together as one agency. So with us working as one agency with the public, we can offer better customer service, and the public can go on this, on our ACA website, and understand exactly where their project is in the review process, and that's a big plus for us.
And also Mecklenburg County is starting with this process as well, so.
Right, we're seeing the adoption of our Digital Plan Room product in regionalization. So Cabarrus County is the first in this region live on this particular product. We've started a project with Mecklenburg County, which will also be using the same technology to manage their plan review process, and in the next month or two, we'll be kicking off with the city of Charlotte as well. So we're gonna see a regional adoption of this collaborative plan review technology with Cabarrus County leading the way, essentially.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I know that we've had conversation with some of the builders and developers in the past, and they've said the plan review piece was one of the more time-consuming, and have asked questions about expedited reviews and things of that nature. Is this gonna make that faster and alleviate some of those concerns, or just more efficient?
Expedited plan review is something that is a lot different. When we, if we was to offer the expedited plan review, we have to have the staff available to do those reviews, 'cause if we offer expedited plan review, they will request it, and.
So that puts somebody else further back in the line.
It does.
As it stands now.
And a lot of that's volume, but this will help with the review process of our staff making comments, the city staff making comments, all of them are going into one location, so that contractor architect's not running to the city, not running to the health department, not running here. All of those comments are right there, so that's gonna definitely speed the process up for them.
Right.
A little bit. But it's, again, the expedited process is a total different process, but this one here will have an impact on the speed of review time.
This might make them request that less if they get it faster anyway.
Possibly, yes. Yeah, again, it's not just Cabarrus County that's part of review, you know, there's, we have partners with Concord, Conneplis, Harrisburg, all the other jurisdictions that, four different fire jurisdictions and six different zoning jurisdictions that we're pulling approvals from for this process. But this puts everything under one roof. So the technology would be there if you ever could, you know, do the expedited review.
Well, I would imagine this would be very, very popular with the folks submitting plans, it seems a lot more efficient. Kudos. I hope it works as well as you described it.
Of course.
Of course.
And I assume a revision to an approved set of plans goes through the exact same process, no difference.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to discussion items for action, and from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Courthouse Expansion Project Schematic Design Approval. Kyle Billfer, and I think this must be what has generated a large audience of people today.
I have with me Tom Potts from Sealing Architects, and also Judge McGee, who will act as the steward for the courthouse as we kind of go through this and talk about the schematic design and the different processes that we've completed now. So that presentation will be given by Tom. Judge McGee would like to make some comments, and of course, we'll look at the overall impact to the capital funding project, and Susan will be available if she needs to come up, and yes, most of these folks are here to support this project as they are end-users of the building. So I'll kind of let Tom roll on into it.
Well, good evening. So if we could, if we could go to the first slide. I'll just push that door over. Okay. So yeah, so tonight, what we wanted to do is to give you an update on the schematic design status, and we consider that we're at the point, the milestone, that we're completed with schematic design. And what you see on the top left there is GMP1, GMP2, GMP3, and so just to remind folks that what we're doing is developing this project with three really distinct separate construction packages. The first one's a site-enabling package, which would be site utilities and the demolition of the 1971 jail, and there's an elevator that we have to put inside the existing building so that we can continue to escort defendants to court. We have to do all of this work along with some site excavation and foundations in order to enable us to get to a place where we can actually build the larger portion, which is GMP2 that you see. And then when that is complete, then we actually get to a place where we're able to renovate the 1975 courthouse. But we have to consider all three of these pieces at one time so that we really understand all the parts and the pieces, and we can account for things, and we can estimate the entire project. So in those four blocks, there are really kind of four main pieces to this. That's the space planning with all of the stakeholders that are inside the courthouse. There is an item two, it's been a process of defining all of the building system requirements. You can see there a list of interior finishes and structural, all of the HVAC, electrical power, lighting, those kind of things, all the way down to preliminarily identifying the furniture that will be, the loose furniture that will be required in the building. And then in item three, it was a process of developing building elevations, you know, what is the form and the character and the massing of those elements. And then item four is this large project of developing utilities, and then also this public plaza that we would propose. So all of that work are really kind of the four major tasks of that schematic design. You can see in that dark blue box over there to the left, and not only in the process of working out with all of the users, many of whom are here, is in block number one, but also in that dark blue box, it was quite a process the last six months as we worked this out of making sure that we had worked with stakeholders such as the city of Concord, Mr. Kulp that was just here, the city fire department. We took a trip to Raleigh and visited with the state fire marshal's office to vet early in the process of how we interpreted the code, discussions with local business owners, public review of the building elevations, as you know, worked with the administrative office of the courts. So there's a lot of collaboration with other stakeholders besides the users. We completed this process on the 31st of August and officially turned over a large drawing set along with building systems narratives. I guess you could kind of say it was somewhat of an outline specification, and that information was provided to your CM, construction manager at risk, Messer Lyles Construction Company, and they're here represented today. And it was also provided to a third-party estimator, which was KDM Consultants, which is a firm that we have worked with in the past, and both of them prepared independent estimates. They were, they worked in their own silos, if you will, to develop a cost estimate for this project, and then we got together, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, and compared notes, and what do you have and what do you have, and it's kind of like getting a assessor's evaluation of a property by two different people if you kind of look at it that way. So down at the bottom, you see that blue arrow that says schematic design and a dollar sign, and so at that point is the first estimating milestone, and then as we move forward, we'll go through design development where it gets more technical, even more technical than we already are, and then we'll also go through the same process that I just described with giving documents to both Messer and to KDM, and it'll do the same, just price estimating process. And when we get through that gate, then we go to the development of even more technical documents and the final development of the GMP. So that is the process, and you know, during the last two months, as after the drawings were completed, the estimate has been prepared, there was a lot of reconciliation that went on, and we'll talk about that here momentarily as well. Before we do that, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Judge McGee, and I know that he has a lot to say about, you know, this whole process and where we are at this moment.
Thank you very much, Tom. And first, I'd like to thank you all for allowing those of us who work in our current courthouse to assist you in planning and designing the new one. This has seemed at times for some of us to be a part-time job, but that is not a complaint. We have embraced the responsibility of working together to assist you in your decision-making. As you know, in 2007, before the Great Recession, the county commissioners authorized a need study by Mosley Architects to help it determine what should be done, given that we had outgrown our current facility. And that was more than a decade ago, before we, our present commissioners, and I, were in our current positions. Although a need to build a new courthouse was clearly found, I understand the financial difficulties of the recession shelved the project. In 2016, the commissioners again engaged Mosley Architects to update their prior need study. After it was completed, and after again, the need to build a new courthouse was clearly documented, the county contracted with Seiling Architects. documented, the county contracted with Seiling Architects to design a new courthouse. Many of us who work across the street were asked to assist in developing a plan to address the obvious need for more space. The leaders that work in our current courthouse are not experts on how the county will grow in the next 30 to 50 years and what resources will be allocated by our county from the general assembly. I know the North Carolina Administrative Offices of the Courts, with the aid of the National Center for State Courts, has worked with our architects to assist in evaluating the appropriate size of the building, given the expectation that it will serve our community for the next 40 or 50 years. It is within this context that the leaders of our courthouse have worked with Seiling to make our best recommendations concerning how the space should be used. Many of us have traveled together to over a half dozen or so new courthouses across the state to help us formulate our recommendations. We participated in countless meetings, viewed mock-up courtrooms built by Seiling, and done our best to consider every detail that we can foresee. We've also given serious thought to how we would use the building on the day it opens and how it would be used as our needs change. We reexamined every aspect of how we schedule cases, from advising people of council charge with the lowest level misdemeanors to the trial of complex cases such as murder and medical malpractice. We've also taken into consideration that over the next five years, our courthouse will go paperless, or nearly paperless, with the introduction of the Odyssey software by Tyler Technologies. This will transform our court in many ways, including nearly eliminating the need to store paper and will affect the design of working spaces. We've been proactive in preparing for this change so the courthouse that will be built for the future, not for the paper filled past. It is through all of this work that we've reached a consensus. Seiling has met with each group of leaders in our courthouse and have been informed that the current plan meets their needs to serve our community. The current plan, in my view, meets our needs now and for a considerable period of time thereafter. It has also incorporated considerable shell space to continue to meet our needs as we grow. It is designed for a safe place to resolve disputes in our community, whether those disputes are resolved in a courtroom or in a child custody mediation conference room. It provides jurors with a space that recognizes and symbolizes their importance in our judicial system. In my view, the generation of Cabarrus County citizens who built our historic courthouse got it just right. In its time, it was a building worthy of its important function in our society, a place to provide justice. It also, it continues to remain one of our most recognizable symbols in our community. It was also durable enough to remain our courthouse for approximately 100 years. I find that generations' work to be inspiring. In rebuilding parliament, Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings; thereafter they shape us." We've been mindful of this as we have worked together with Seiling. I am confident that the leaders of our courthouse have done their best in providing you with our best judgment on space utilization. At the risk of leaving someone out, I would like to thank Chief Judge, Chief District Court Judge Kristy Wilhelm, who is present, her predecessor, Judge Billy Hamby, who is also present, all of the district court judges, and I believe we have present with us Judge Canous, Judge Boger Allen, and Judge Grossman. Clerk Bill Bags, who's present, and his staff, who's assisted us, District Attorney Roxanne Vanikovin, who is also present, Ashley Shanley, members of the local bar, including those present, Otha Townsend, Darren Gammerat, and Amy Zacharias. Jim Scarborough has also participated in this. And Lieutenant David Allred and the other bailiffs for participating and providing input. Those with leadership responsibilities have signed the plans indicating their approval on space utilization. And I'd like to say, working with Mike Downs, Kyle Billfer, and other county staff, as well as Tom Potts and other members of Seiling Architects, has been a very rewarding experience for me. Again, on behalf of the leadership at the Cabarrus County courthouse, thank you for allowing us to participate. I hope our work will be helpful to you in making this important decision for our county, for the present and future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. What I'm going to do very quickly here is to just summarize the space planning. You can see that we have basement through the fifth floor. The basement would hold juvenile justice, community corrections in the long term. There are 23 parking spaces and secure parking. The red is the route for defendant escort, secure defendant escort from the jail into the courthouse and up into the courtrooms without cross-traffic or interaction with public or staff. The, there are some record spaces down there, but as Judge McGee indicated, that we anticipated this Odyssey coming onboard, and so therefore we were minimal in our archive storage planning. And that space is in fact convertible as juvenile justice will grow, and we assume that it will, with the raise of the age, that that space is convertible to office space in that area. The first floor, if we move up, you can see the dark blue arrows. That's public entry from Church Street on the north, planned north, and from Union in the other direction. And you can see the light blue is parking entry down to the lower level. And the gold on the right side is staff and attorney entry. So it was very important, if you recall, early on to have separate staff and public entries, and so we've done that. Ones on one side of the building, the others on the other side of the building. You can see the light blue or clerk of court space. What we learned from talking to the AOC is even though we've gone a certain distance in the development of clerks' offices, we are going to have to backtrack, we think, a little bit in molding some of our clerk's office spaces, really to kind of fit this, what is in effect going to be a fundamental change to the way that the clerk will have to do business with this new software. So we've got some work to do there and I'm excited to have to take that on and to see how that's going to change, modify. It'll tweak the building a little bit. It's not going to tweak our overall space requirements. You can see there the first appearance court and the district court, the traffic court there, admin court on the first floor. We're putting our high-volume courts on the first floor, trying to restrict our movement up the building. You know, Judge McGee talked about the way that they're dealing with sentencing, lower level misdemeanors and those kind of cases is also kind of a fundamental way in the way that Cabarrus County is going to deal with courts. And so I think, as he said, the building is really shaping the way that business is going to be done. And so we've addressed that there on the first floor. As you move up in the building, the second floor are district courts and judges' office suites. The third floor, you can see bottom left is, there's a development of a courtroom on the right, and you can see it says community corrections swing space. Originally, that was not, you know, back in February, we had not planned for that swing space to be included in the building, but just because of real estate conditions, we had to find a temporary home for community corrections while we renovated the 1975 building. So we're going to put them up there and that will allow us to completely renovate their space. And so then when they move out, there's going to be a really kind of a space for potentially three courtrooms in the future. And those would be theoretically, those would be district courtrooms. And then the DA office suite is the area in green that is underneath that. And then the fourth floor planned to the right are four, right now in the planning, are four jury-capable Superior Court courtrooms. It's very light, but the second floor and the third floor of the 1975 building are planned south on the second floor and the third floor. And there, that is fundamentally shell space, and it could be shell space for as many as four standard-sized courtrooms. So if you look on the right, you can see the courtroom summary. The clerk has a courtroom on the first floor. There are seven district courtrooms the day that we would open, four Superior Courtrooms, and the potential for seven future courtrooms. Or it could be that perhaps the county would take on public defender space or something like that, and maybe the space that's in the 1975 building would not be used for courtrooms. So you have flexibility and growth. And you can see down, a footnote down at the bottom, 245,000 square feet new, 75, or excuse me, 73,000 square foot renovation with a total ultimately of 45,000 square foot shell space, so you have room to grow again.
Before you go on the attorney entry, staff and attorney entry, is there an elevator in there? Do they go to a public elevator or how is that set up?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. All of the staff circulation has dedicated elevators that are not, there's never a cross-traffic condition. They can, once they enter the building, they can stay completely within the staff-restricted corridors and then move up through the floors without ever having to go out into public areas. So very quickly, I've got just the images, and I believe that everybody's probably seen them again, but just to refresh the memory there, you know, this is, I think, a significant image because here's this, you know, this historic courthouse, and they have the 1975 courthouse. And the idea there was that we want to soften that 1975 building up. It is, is probably, in a lot of people's opinion, you know, it was a state-of-the-art building, 1975, but it's a bunker. And so, you know, part of what we're going to do there, or we propose to do, as you can see, is deconstruct the Union Street side and the historic courthouse side with a fair amount of glass opening. And the whole idea is that circulation, once you go through the entry on the, that's sticking out to the left of the courthouse, that there is a circulation path, that you're always focused on that historic courthouse as you're walking around the inside of that building. And I think it'd be quite nice, and it really, and then you'll see in other images, the way that the building materials are melding together as if to make one united composition of the 1975 building with the new construction. So just four thumbnails. The upper left-hand corner is the intersection of Corbin and Church. Below it is the intersection of Means and Church. And then you can see the upper right-hand corner is the view looking down the plaza, and then a close-up below that of the entry elevation from the, really from the Church Street side. The idea with the elevations is warm materials and is expressed in the wood, warm natural materials, a lot of glass for natural light introduced into the building. I think the paradigm for new, for courthouses now is to be as transparent as possible, and I think we're doing that. All of that Church Street elevation is a great amount of natural light and glass that's into the public pre-function space. Again, I think about the users of this building who are probably nervous, don't want to be there, don't like the conditions with which they're under. I think about, for me personally, just the idea of being able to look out into the, into the distance allows me to kind of settle myself, I think, when I'm in certain places. I think that's kind of a common thing for people to be able to just escape a little bit, and I think that's great for court design, and it's quite a common use. So we think that together, these materials, they fundamentally change the 1975 courthouse. It creates a composite assembly between both the new and the old, a great way of wrapping around the, and celebrating really, the historic courthouse, and nice natural materials and a drawl together with the plaza. So with that, what I'd like to do is move quickly to the, really where we are with this process of delivering the drawings and our estimators and having two separate estimates. This is the latest update on the total estimated construction cost, or the cost of the work, as we call it. And you probably note that it is up from when we met in February with our rough order of magnitude pricing, which at that time was at about 100 million. And so this is up to 109,034.99. And you can see how it breaks down with the site enabling package at 6.7 million, the new construction's 88 million and some change, and the renovation of the courthouse is 14 The drawing sets that were given to both estimators, I think it's pretty interesting that the KDM was at about 107 million and Messer was at about 109. I think that's phenomenal that both estimators, working in silos, were about 2% off. So what that tells me is that they're seeing the same scope, that their math, you know, what their takeoffs are from what they had, you know, just the square footage and the labor cost and that kind of thing, even though there's a variance of 2 million, you know, they're still very, very close to one another, which gives me encouragement. There, you know, at a schematic design level, I think the documents we provided them had a fair amount of information for them to take off, but it's still not design development level. We tried within that six-month period of time, provide them with as much detail as we could so that they could estimate it as, we could get as close to reality at that point in time as we could. And I think we did that. I think we had a really full and complete set of schematic design documents. You'll note that, if you can see there on the right-hand side, there, the estimate includes an $8.5 million contingency, and that is really a bid estimating and construction contingency, along with a $2.5 million escalation. Now, all of that would be within Messer's contract right now. But what typically would happen is, at design development, when we, when they come back with the next estimate, the theory is that that $8.5 million contingency, which is a little under 10%, that number is going to get less and their actual takeoff numbers are going to get higher. So that 8.5 million is really accounting for scope that they can't identify in our drawings at this point, and they have to keep that elbow room all the way through until actually through construction. But the hope is that that number gets smaller while the actual estimate numbers themselves get more, more developed and there's more information. So I think at this time, too, I want to let, Kyle's got some things to do with the total, say with the total project cost here.
So obviously, the GMP 1, 2, and 3, since when we met with you in February, those numbers have gone up. That also has an impact on the entire funding for the project. So Susan was nice enough to put this spreadsheet together, and that shows you the increased GPM 1, 2, and 3. The only other buckets that would change is the actual architectural contract. The architectural contract is affected by the actual GMP. So how that architectural contract works is for your basic design, that's a 5.25% off of the GMPs, and your basic construction administration is a 1.25%. So that kind of gives you an idea of, as a GMP gets larger, so does the actual architectural contract. All of the other portions of that capital funding, so all of your other buckets, have all stayed the same. So that number that you're seeing and highlighted down at the bottom, compared to what we showed you in February, that's the increase, based on the estimates on schematic design only. And again, estimates on schematic design only. And each GMP will have to come back in front of the board.
What was the number that we had in our capacity presentation the other night?
I believe it was 125 million total.
Okay. Relatively close. It can cost $7 million relatively.
So the motion that was put in this agenda item is basically the motion of the approval of this schematic design and allowing us to move forward with this schematic design, and that's why Judge McGee and other end-users of the courthouse are here, is to show their support in the process of getting to this end of the schematic design and moving forward into the next phase. So that's what we're asking for, a motion from the board.
Kyle, this would probably be a question for Susan. Oh, there Susan is, since she prepared this. When you go out for financing and all of that, there's also costs associated with that. I don't see those costs reflected here anywhere. Could you give me, give us some kind of an idea of what the estimated costs are going to be? Because obviously that drives the cost of the total project up because you've got to pay for the, to get the money.
And in fact, it was probably a good time now to tell you that we're going to the local government commission the first week in December, and we're anticipating trying a new funding process where we will, sort of like a line of credit for your house, where we won't borrow, you know, the 88 million dollars upfront because we can't spend it that fast. So we have a program where we can just draw down what we need and we will have less interest to pay. But your question about issuing debt, it's better to issue it once a year instead of twice, so this is going to help us on that. I don't have the difference between this new plan because we've not done it before, but typically when we borrowed money for, I'm going to say like the high school, it was about $700,000. And then for the elementary school, we borrowed less, it was a little bit more, you know, less than that. So... So, it just depends on whether we have to go out for a public offering or a private placement. A private placement is when you, one institution will buy the entire debt, and a public offering, we have to have rating agency cost and just different, different closing costs. So, it's better for us if we have one institution that will buy all of our debt, so the closing costs are much less. So, it's just hard to say right now. I could get those numbers for you?
No, no, I'm just trying to get an idea, but, so, it could really be right around a million bucks, really.
Yes.
I mean, if you look at the LGC cost and all the other things that we have to look at to get the funding, so you're looking at that gross, you can figure about a million bucks more for the cost of finance, not counting the interest.
Yes.
I think we talked about that a little bit.
Talked about that a little bit, some extended-term financing. So, that obviously would help reduce the debt service on an annual basis, but then again, it's going to be for quite a few more years. But like we have also talked about previously, you're looking at a facility that'll go 40, 50, 60 years, and so, if we can stretch it out a little bit longer than 20 years, which is what we do for schools, I think it would make us things a whole lot more palatable for everyone, especially our finance department.
As we go to the Local Government Commission, that first week in December, we're going to propose that we go 30 years on the courthouse as opposed to the 20. So, you're, you're right, because it's, you know, 20 years is just, you know the building's going to last much longer than 20 years, so we're going to ask the Local Government Commission for permission, so.
You're going to ask politely the first time.
Yes.
Can we go back to the slide that shows the contingency? I just want to make sure I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm following. So, the eight and a half is just a placeholder for the tightening of the scope, specs, all of that. They just, that, that's Messer's number, that they don't think whatever you, whatever goes from here forward, it's not going to be greater than that. They just can't put, can't say exactly what it is, they just don't think it's going to be greater than that.
Well, number one, this is not a GMP. This is an estimate of the GMP. Yes, they, they think that, that $8.5 million is enough to account for scope that they cannot see in the documents. And then, the $2.5 million is market escalation. And of course, you know, GMP 3 is, you know, three or four years out when you buy that out. So, it, the wild card in every bit of this, that they can't figure, nobody can determine, is what happens with market conditions. That is, how many, how many major subcontractors are going to come to the table and, and bid on this work? And, you know, they have a great track record, they can, they could probably address it themselves, but they have a, a great track record of vendors or subcontractors that want to work with them, and it's their job to, to, to get these people to the table so that there's competition amongst your structural steel erection, your HVAC contractor, electrical so forth, and finish contractors. And, but it's, it's, it's cost of materials, and it's really the number of people that are going to compete for that work at that time.
Right. I, I guess, and I understand this is not the current GMP, I guess what I'm after is, that eight and a half is inside the 132. I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, I'm sorry.
How much is the 132 likely to change? And if they think that number pretty much has, you know, they don't anticipate having a big surprise other than the market, I mean, yes, we all get that.
Right.
That's what I was really trying to get a handle on.
Yes, and, and I'm sorry, but that 109, 109, that eight and a half million is in that 109.
Okay.
And it's to account for scope that they can't define.
And perhaps to clarify the two contingencies, because they're carrying a contingency, that's, that's for them and their bidding and their GMPs. The county is also carrying a contingency for the, we want to change something completely or something comes out that we are asking for a change from both groups, quite frankly, whether it's some more design that needs to be done for something we've changed our mind on, and then we need to go into Sillings Architect, their contract, and up that, and then also get an additional GMP from Messer. So, those are two different, when you see those contingencies listed, they are two different things.
It looked like Chairman Morris was formulating a question, and I was going to step in while he, it looked like the wheels were turning.
No, I'm figuring on the paper.
Did you guys ever take a look at that building I sent you a picture of in, in Arsley, down in South Charlotte, that has the glass and the, I mean, it looks basically just like it's an office building. I don't know if you had a chance to?
Yes, and we're actually going on a field trip to look at 12 to 15 buildings throughout North Carolina that utilize a lot of those materials. So, Greensboro and Raleigh seem to be our, our heavy hitters right now with not only that type of material, but the sun shading, which has such an impact on the H rack cost of it also for us. That, that's a, a big fear on the owner's side, is that much glass and what it's going to impact us on the mechanical side.
Got you. Well, and just as a general comment, I like the design. I like the design elements, I like the glass, the, it, it's, as we talked previously, there's a lot of different architecture types that we could stand in that window right there and look out and see, and so, it's, it's, it's tough to say, well, we're mirror, let's mirror that, or we're married to that one, when anything you do, you're going to be able to point to something else and say, well, you didn't even come close to looking like that. So, I think you've done a nice job of putting something together that's going to stand out, but it's going to stand out in a good way, because it's going to be such a prominent piece of downtown Concord, and, and taking those, those natural elements that you talked about, and natural light and glass. So, I, for one, just as a general comment, I like the design. I think they've done an excellent job. I don't think anybody sitting here likes the number, but I think at some level, we've known it's coming. We have 100, what'd you say, 128, 5? So, our largest capital asker that we met with the other day, they know what we're looking at and what we're dealing with. So, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody that was there at that meeting either. So, it's just something we're going to have to figure out how we're going to get there and what other things are going to be impacted when the capacity goes from 129 to 132. But we're certainly dealing with it, and I have confidence in the, our board, and I have confidence in county manager and his staff to, to help us get where we need to go.
Great. Any other questions or comments? More from you gentlemen.
No, I think we've done enough damage tonight.
Quite a bit.
I wanted to say just one more thing, Commissioner Morris, if I can, and that is reference to financing again. I think we talked one time, Susan, about phasing this. We won't go out for the whole, and you mentioned it just a minute ago, but I think you were talking about maybe one specific part. But, but didn't we talk about spreading it out, like some next year, and then some the next year, and some the next year, where that it wouldn't hit, it wouldn't hit the debt service all at one time?
Yes, but this drawl program that they're calling, we will get permission, if all goes according to plan, like we like, we'll get permission in February for the whole entire project, but we would only issue and then draw the amount of money that we need. So, Kyle and I are both working on a cash flow now as to when we're going to need the draws for, to pay our huge construction bills when they come in, or the architect, so we'll have the funding there. So, and then we got to layer in, the school needs to, so that'll be added to it, but.
That's the way I was thinking that it was, but I wanted the viewing audience that's watching this in TV land to at least understand that we're not going out for this big whopperdoodle amount of money at one time. We're going to spread it out a little bit so that it will help reduce the debt service annually.
Great. Anything else? Thank you very much. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, I guess I had one, I have one more question. I was going to ask Judge McGee.
Yes, sir.
Anytime that many people have input on doing a project, you're going to have a group, some happier than others, but generally speaking, do the groups that utilize the courthouse feel like that their needs are going to be met with the schematic that we've seen?
And I believe most of them are here, and I believe the answer is yes. If you think that is so, if you just raise your hand, I appreciate it.
Don't, don't worry. Thank you.
That's, that's a pretty strong statement. I think, kudos to you guys for working through that process and getting everybody on the same page.
I, it has been a, a very good process. I sincerely appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to work, to try to help you all in planning, and the folks that work in the building, the leaders in the building, have been very eager and willing to help out, and I'm very appreciative for everything that folks have done, and thank you all again for hearing from us.
Thank you. We, we would hate to build a building of this scope and price and the people that use it not like it. That'd be pretty sad, so you're making all of us feel good about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item 4.2, arena capital purchase, and I think Jonathan and Kristen and Kenny Robinson will lead us on that one.
So, once again, I'm going to start off. If you have questions about the budget amendment itself, Kristen can handle those. If you have questions about this specific request that brought this about, Kenny is here for that, and I will talk to you a little bit about process. So, just to maybe set the stage, when we signed our contract with SMG, there was included with that contract a contribution from them for $150,000 total that would be used towards capital purchases. Over time, Kenny has presented those, their staff has presented those, we review those, Mike, Kyle, and I go over, and then, along with Kenny, if they're okay, then we have moved forward with those capital improvements or purchases. As time has passed, and Kristen can explain this better than I, that was basically the money we had not spent was absorbed into a fund balance. So, it is identified for this specific purpose, so we are having to do a budget amendment to move it back and make it available for that. Kenny has proposed some security upgrades, that he can explain better, and then in addition, he has some other items for us to consider that are capital purchases, but this moves the money back and makes it available for those purposes, for that reason. And then, there is a option for a renewal in the contract, and there would be some additional funds that would come with that renewal, should we, should we opt for that, that also would be used for this same purpose, and we'll make sure we budget those accordingly. Kenny, you want to talk about the security vestibules?
I will. Up to this point in the venue's history, we've not had fixed metal detectors similar to what you have at, going in the courthouse, in the airports, we've used handheld metal detectors. They're not completely reliable, it's, they're, they're only as good as the user. What we're looking to do is purchase four battery-operated with backup from Shore Power, walk-through metal detectors that we can use at any entrance on the complex. It does a few things for us. It, it overcomes the human element, they're more reliable of detecting objects you don't want in. And as important for us as operators, it speeds the throughput up dramatically. Currently, and I'll use a 4,000-person concert at Cabarrus Arena right now, it takes about seven, sometimes eight doors, seven or eight people using handheld metal detectors to get those folks in, and the 30 or 45 minutes you have from the time door's open till the show starts. With these walk-through metal detectors, you can reduce that staffing by about half and achieve the same throughput, and still do a better job of, of detecting what it is you're looking for. This is a little bit of an unusual purchase for this capital improvement fund. In the past, we focused on things that were revenue generators, things like upfitting one of the concession stands with cooking equipment that was not put there during construction and was not needed until a few years ago. Other things that we've used some of this money for is to buy banquet chairs for the Cabarrus rooms, so that we're not using the, the chair, the same type chairs you would use for a concert or beside the, the bench for a basketball court. Upgraded the facilities a little bit in that manner, and also some, some new equipment, some new pipe and draping, some different colors that we're able to rent to our clients and, and increase revenue that way. So, this is a little different, but we think it's the right use of that money.
So, just to, I'll kind of go over just the budget revision again, because there's also a corresponding project ordinance. Mr. Marshall explained it so eloquently. The one thing I will note is, we are proposing to move this to a capital projects fund. That way, we don't have to keep re-appropriating the funds every year. It's going to go in a capital projects account that the arena will have access to. So, that is what this budget revision and corresponding project ordinance is doing. Any questions?
Not for finance, for Kenny. I'm assuming that these metal detecting systems are mobile, you can move them from this door to that door, they're not permanently fixed or anything?
Yep, you're, you're exactly right, and we chose to look at the, the battery-powered version with, with an extension cord backup to allow us to use it at any door, even outside. They're Oncasters, they're, the manufacturer can't say they're waterproof, so you put anything in a swimming pool, and it's going to fry the electronics, but it can stand being outside in a thunderstorm.
Is it going to be a type system where the people have to, sort of like TSA at the airport, if you had to put your stuff on a conveyor and it goes through and all that?
You know, it'll, it'll be a walk-through metal detector, and you would have probably what you're used to seeing in, in many other stadiums and arenas, the, the little bowl, put your keys and cellphone and wallet, that sort of thing, and pass it on the outside.
Yeah.
How do you determine which, which events you use them for? Is it mostly just for concerts, or?
The, the criteria we use is if it, and concert's a good analogy, if, if, if folks are entering through a certain, a specified number of entrances, like at a concert, when you can reasonably do those checks, we do so wherever possible. Concerts, cheerleading competitions, dance competitions, some of the harder events to do that we, really we can't do are things like dog shows, where essentially every door in the venue is unlocked to allow, you know, free passage to and from, just because that's what that event needs. If it's reasonable logistically to do it, we intend to have them in place.
Great. Okay, additional questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we go on, as, as Mr. Marshall said, the, this is the final year of the existing contract, so we will be coming back to you. We've had conversations with Kenny and, and their regional representative, and, which speaks for the, the company, but, so we'll be bringing back our recommendation to you in early December to, to consider extending the contract with SMG, SMG.
ASM Global.
ASM Global is their new name, so, but, so, we'll be bringing that back to you and having those discussions in early December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is item 4.3, purchase of property for a future high school. Jonathan Marshall.
So, these are two parcels of land located off Kannapolis Parkway that we've been negotiating for to replacement for Northwest Cabarrus High School, which is, again, the priorities have been set by the school board, and then we seek property to meet those priorities. We had a letter of intent that went to both property owners. We're ready to move forward now with contracts. Mr. Cook has drafted those contracts, and the, the two individual families are now reviewing those. I should have, I actually have drafts of those, I just wanted them to take a look at them, but I'll be attaching those to your agenda for your regular meetings, so you can also look at them. The budget for this property, we estimated it would be about a $5 million purchase. The prices for these are just a little bit below that, but it's very close to that budgeted amount. Again, there's, there's a map attached, should you, I, I know we've discussed these, and so you should be familiar with the location, but there's a map attached, should you have any questions about that.
Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Marshall? Okay, then we move to item 4.4, contractual incentive payment for SMG for the arena. Jonathan and Susan.
Susan, you might just want to stay there. This is something you see every year. There's a, the contract includes a quantitative calculation for some additional payment to SMG within their contract, and finance calculates those based on the revenues and income of the events and the operation of those events. And then there's also a qualitative, and Mike Downs and I both go through and do a survey and determine a score for that for each year, based on our experience, our interaction with them, and then finance uses both of those to make the calculations that come before you, typically at this time period. typically at this time period, November, December each year, as part of the contract.
Okay, questions? Okay, we go to item 4.5, update of investment policy, listing of banking institutions and list of investment officers. Susan Fearington.
And when reviewing our invest, county's investment policy, it was determined that the policy was probably about 11 years old. So finance staff worked with the local government commission, um, the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, and reviewed several other jurisdictions' investment policies, so we could update her on. Some of those changes was, um, a new 40% commercial paper limit. Some jurisdictions will go up to 50%, and we didn't feel comfortable doing that, we thought 40% was better. If you remember, commercial paper is a little more riskier than government agencies. So currently, we have about 31% of our investment portfolio, in commercial papers, we felt comfortable with that. And then, um, we also, when looking at the investment policy, we wanted some clear descriptions between what was the role of the finance director, and what was the role of the investment officers, so we cleared that, all that up in, within that, um, new policy. There's also a requirement that investment institutions and brokers are evaluated annually, so in November, we'll do that each year, and this includes a review of their audited financial statements, and the broker check by FINRA, and that's the, um, I had to look that up, make sure I knew what, Financial Industry Regulatory Authority. And they go, and they will independently look at the different investment, um, brokers and make sure that they're, doing what they're supposed to do, so we can get that checked. And we will get credit ratings from two different rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, or Standard and Poor's. The overall theme to our investment policy, and it is as in any investment policy, is to make sure that we are doing safety, liquidity, and then yield. So the safety, we obtained, um, through only investment and invest, investing and investments that are allowed by our general statute 159 dot, dot 30. And then liquidity is, uh, we had to watch that, because we don't want, um, huge investments coming out, and they're not coming due in time to make our debt payments. Or if we have, um, we know that we're going to be buying some property, like, like today, we transferred money for some property, we'll have to make sure that we keep that on hand. We don't want to have to go sell an investment just so we can do that. So I have a, um, a lady in my office that takes care of that for us, um, and she does a good job of keeping up and ladder-ing when our investments come due, and when our debt payments are due, are due, so they correspond. And we're also very conservative in our, in the finance department. So, um, the liquidity, like I said, we'll make sure that we have our debt payments are covered. And then the yield is important, but it's only after the safety, safety and liquidity are achieved, the yield comes into play. So includes, also included in your agenda packet is a list of authorized, authorized investment officials, officers, and approved banking institutions is also included. Questions?
So curiosity, and I didn't read through the entire policy, do we have a minimum number of banking institutions that we need to keep?
We don't, um, typically, we have, do two or three at a time, and people will come off and on for reasons, you know, typical reasons. Some people don't want to deal in government, with governments, but we typically don't want our employees bombarded by, you know, people continually calling them saying, hey, I've got this offer, I've got this to offer you. It just takes a lot of time, so we typically, you know, two or three, and then, you know, what she'll do is she'll send out an email blast and say, I have $5 million to invest, what do you have to offer? And see which, which one comes back. It says, because she has other duties other than just investments. So that's, um, that seems to have worked in the past couple of years, is to send out an email and try and get the things back.
Okay. Does it show, I guess, six depositories?
Some of those are official depositories, so, like, for example, SunTrust, that's our, this is approved list of official depositories and our investments. So the official depositories you have, like SunTrust, that's our main financial institution, that's where your checks are drawn. Uh, the third, that is our bank we use for workers' comp and liability insurance. Uh, BB and T's are lock locks. Regions Bank is our trustee, safe, uh, safekeeping, and we can do some investments with them. Um, also, First Bank is where our relationship with, um, SMG that was up, just up here, we are on some of those bank accounts. And then On Down Ca, North Carolina Cash Trust, and then Multi Bank Security, and Raymond James, those are the ones that right now that we are investigating, and we, then they're up to date. And as, as we want to, if other banks want to come on, or other people, then we can definitely take it to the board and have them approved.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next is item 4.7, from the sheriff's office, resolution approving bike safety grant funds, and we are happy to have Benita Conrad to talk with us about that.
Hello, I'm here to represent the sheriff's office on behalf of Van Shaw. We have this Bike Safe Grant coming up, this will be our fourth year for this Bike Safe Grant, uh, and we are able to offer Bike Safe classes. We started in 19, in 19, I'm sorry, 19, 2019, um, we had over 50 riders that we assisted with the Iredale Sheriff's Office and the Guilford County Sheriff's Office, and we had these students in our classes, and they have learned to be Bike Safe instructors. Since this Bike Safe Grant, it, it came, actually, something similar came out of England, and they have noticed a 28% reduction in their motorcycle fatalities. So that's pretty huge. Our classes are held by our motorcyclists that are trained, and they offer radar skill classes to the drivers, and exist, of only existing skills with advice from our motor officers, because they're used to doing this every day on their bicycles. I'm sorry, not bicycles, motorcycles. Um, as well as teaching, uh, professional riding techniques, uh, the topics also include control of the motorcycle in a collision, and things that do cause collisions. Uh, rider skills day occur during the week, and then on the weekends, they're instructed by highly qualified officers in the classroom. Recently, the deputies were at the state fair, um, with the traffic and enforcement and education piece of Safety City, um, and they were able to present their Bike Safe, um, information to that group at the fair. We have a lieutenant, Aaron Rankin, who leads this program, and he does this, um, just out of the dedication that he has shown in keeping motorcycle riders safe. So we were actually asking tonight that, um, this annual grant be, the resolution be approved by the commissioners, um, so that we can receive the money for the coming year and go ahead and schedule our, um, our classes that the officers are going to teach. And they actually do this regionally, um, Cabarrus, Mecklenburg Union, Rowan, Anson, Stanley, and Moore Counties. Uh, so this is a regional grant where our officers are instructing regionally for motorcycle drivers.
Right, sounds like an excellent program. And by the way, when we finish this, we will go back and pick up 4.6 that I skipped. Michael's wondering wherever he is. They have requested that we suspend the rules and, um, pass this motion tonight. So before we proceed, are there any questions or comments?
I made a motion to suspend the rule.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and would entertain a motion to approve the resolution and budget amendment to receive the bike safety grant funds. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we will move to item 4.6, which I skipped, uh, offer for purchase of surplus ambulances. And Michael Miller has turned in to Kyle Vilefer. No wonder I couldn't see him.
Unfortunately, you get the older version of Michael, but, um, this, this was brought up last time, um, and since then, it has gone through the upset bid process. This is, um, we've received an offer of $1,000 from joineta.com for a purchase of county asset 8357, which is a 2014 Chevrolet ambulance, and a second offer for another $1,000 from the same entity, joineta.com, for the purchase of county asset 8358, which is another 2014 Chevy ambulance. We did post a notice of an upset bid, and we received no upset bids. So the motion will be to, um, take this to the regular session meeting, and to, um, proceed with the sale of both of those county assets. So that will be on the agenda for the 18th, and it was just to come and inform you that we've had no upset bids.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Kyle? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to the approval of our regular meeting agenda, which you all have a copy, uh, before you. Does anyone see any corrections or changes to that regular meeting agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Um, I will mention that Commissioner Poole is out sick tonight and has not been with us, so we wish her a speedy recovery. Um, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and personnel as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318, 11A, 3, 4, and 6. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.